Thank you.
Motion to review and then have the considerable team. Two thousand twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Motion by Tara. Signed by Ellen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. Carrie. Motion to accept the CFP, CPSC, and the five-hour board report. Second by Tara. Second by Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Same. Carrie. Do you have any agenda changes?
No.
Um. Okay, so we have our financials, general fund expenditures, school lunch expenditure, and our lunch report, and our extracurricular fund for October. Do you have any other questions?
With this cold snap, we lose a lot of control. Not that I, that I took on. Um, probably more important than that is we're still working on the unit events. So you might be hearing that the heating. Kind of goes up and down. Um, I, I don't even want to say, I think we're at a place somewhere a month ago, but most times we seem to be in a better place than we were a month ago. Um, just so you know, we are continuously working on it. And Frank is obviously very involved. We still have contractors involved. And trying to figure out some other bumps and breezes.
When is that projected to be finished?
The work needs things out.
I mean, the project?
Oh, the project is finished.
Okay.
The project is finished, yes.
Four months.
Yeah, uh, the tints, I'll let, uh, let, let them know in the future.
What have you put the money in the class of two thousand twenty-four? Does that go to the next class?
We have a policy, they may have the ability to spend it. Um, but if they've already got it, they have enough money to. Putting it all out. I think it's the next time.
I just did.
I just don't remember.
I just say they still have a balance in their pocket for two thousand twenty-four.
Karen's lunch program is right online, but. Karen's lunch program. I mean, I had to stay and say she's keeping a good eye on it. Yeah, she's a good manager, I think.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Stephanie, did you have anything you wanted to point out? Okay, so then we'll move on. We have Rachel Patrico to present in our art department.
All right. All right. So the block is three and that's vacation to all of our person. Okay, so we're talking about art, we're going to be looking at the situations that I've been drawn. Um, so visual arts, we have, um, our people design, and that's what I'm doing now, but I have to put these for, um, so New York City standards is broken in a sort of, um, course protection for, um, visual art, so we're using the common, um, our, um, department. Um, there's people who design, or that's used to organize those, and then we'll talk a little bit about media experience. So visual art standards are, are drawn on, you know, stuff. Um, they're a little bit more vague than I'd say like the. So, um, yeah, I make my, for love to, you know, hit these for this case of creating, so that process, like maybe making time to do your art, presenting, just like new hallways, um, art shows, submitting stuff to, like art shows, just at the boxes, and hiding, like falls, um, in places where people can pick up their own, you know, three times. Um, responding, talking about the art, you know, talking to people, describing it, um, using the kind of words, we talk about art class, um, and talking about other art work as well. Um, detecting, talking about artists that we're around, comparing the art in the classroom, comparing other art works, stuff like that. Um, so the visual art purposes are really the goals. I'd say the only art problem is getting to a public service, you know, like before. So there, like, okay, the kind of words, um, like if a bigger, uh, art, um, some of that stuff, like mine, um, maybe space value, like sure, form, color, all that stuff. So if I was to say project, uh, forms, I would use like, something like that, some forms of. Okay? And the personal design, um, so this is more about like normal vision of our art. Um, I would say this is probably like a type of concept that's part of primary school. Um, I definitely talked about pattern and the concept, and it's more about like taking their medium and putting it in a way that gets more interesting. Um, and then I always try, you know, for doing, to a wide variety of mediums, and I'm doing it today. Um, you know, if I'm trying to figure out what to do, figure out what to do, um, it is good, so it's going to, um, empower the whole, you know, style of what they get to do, you know, sort of, like a broad class or a full class. All right, so this is just the review. So all my products, I'm saying, obviously, need to be New York City, and based on one or more, you know, with the art, which will provide a variety of mediums, and also always like to make sure that I have, or help others to be placed within that, whether it be the content, or the colors, or, um, what you get, and stuff like that. So what are we doing right now? So in elementary, so I didn't use a brigade curriculum at school, um, it was pretty simple, half a couple, they circle. This, I can just primarily for elementary, because if you're so many of them, it's nice to have a, um, resource that does already, like, tells you what, what, where's it gonna be needing. Um, I use that in some cases, like, I'll have some of my own products. Um, it is a little bit more difficult for me to, like, put everything I can do on return on, so I'm trying to, forever, so I'm gonna do that to you guys. Um, because I'm playing around, you know, at elementary, I'm not, um, after, so they might not be really happy with that, like, same thing, like, on school class to me. Um, but for instance, so last week was coloring, so elementary's been for, it was the color nails, primary colors, secondary colors, some of the dishes, specifically, we think we could do a couple weeks, and, um, we're, yeah, color over here. All right, so seven years, we're getting more into my, like, I have, you know, progress bar, and preschool, and all that, so seven eighth grade, um, building a variety of mediums, so trying to get value from that thing, so every person that, uh, company, company, that probably, we're having, um, we're normally in touch with the day, because people, they come to their mind, watch our after, I mean, before the class, I'm on, I'm just coloring drawing, but I, um, play flat boxes, uh, the competition, you know, the left form, and then one thing, like, right, you know, that space, and then that's the inner box. So I got a big picture of a bunch of learning, like, paintings over there. Seven grades, that we have in the drawing, flat boxes. Um, here one, this is a girl from general, um, art class, so again, variety, I think you get one for, you're, you're towards, um, to the art, so, yeah, circle box again. You're gonna see some repetition of things. I also, I like to do multiple projects, which is a very diverse, so that we can get better at them. It's not like a, you only do one to one to show the world again, so I bring back new things around. Um, color paintings, color models, that's, uh, constantly going, yeah, everything, this one, you have really good, I got one background, like, the other, survive. Um, circle ones, work with the holes. I'm trying to keep things, so, uh, work with one of those, but, yeah, it's very, uh, so there too, like I said, um, this is more, uh, one of them. This is more your turn of three D art, and we're making, mixing medias together, so we got the big ten project for the storm, we're gonna do like mini play exploration units, so that can be about, like, slabs, coins, and, you know, things, but it's focused on form detection, landscape, the screen colors, um, then we'll, like, about, like, my art, usually, um, are using, what, I haven't taught, I've taught last year, but I'm gonna be giving pictures from last year, that. Yeah, I love this, I'm moving again. Um, so it's really very, they get a little, and they're actually, that's really kind of, last year, we project, um, so I'm moving again. Uh, so the dance machines, definitely more like a tennis box, um, they had to make teen pieces, that has sort of a series, so they have to make three, all these days, and have your horse, um, so we got, they're into this, we were at the tax, they, the test, we're gonna be, like, for your college, and then, um, we have this lovely portrait that, um, yesterday's doing, uh, a dime, uh, a jersey, bro.
Her version.
Yeah. Um, they're a part of, this is definitely one of my most very destructive classes, because I'm like, so, yeah, including the product, and it's very, you know, the power, you do, obviously, so every week they have a theme, they have to see what those, and these, um, and then, yeah, presented in front of their peers, and everyone talks about it, um, several of them, so there's some competition, there's a project to me, and, um, camera settings, um, and then during, you know, working on editing pictures, editing them, uh, your book, assigning, your task, all of this, um, and then at the, at your point, in any year, they have to comply all the lessons, and you have to, for, um. Um, so this is a dog, and play, they would really, like, um, slow each other's speed, and we've got our classes, and, and this is, uh, uh, three D items, I haven't taught this project since, from the last place, um, there's, it's gonna be new classroom, downstairs, the beast, the church base, um, I'm trying to say, they're gonna be some art cultures, into a lot of play, um, I have, they're great, they're, you know, most, no, most certainly, possibly, like, kind of replicated on certain, um, larger, like, items, they've got, and organized, which is gonna be similar to how the great, uh, traveling, because it's like a puzzle, so, you can, you can, I think, is that good?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Very much so. He has some talented skills.
Okay, thank you. Um, one, Heather Olesch, our school spirit.
I don't have a fancy presentation right for you, but I have my hands out, so I'm gonna take what I'm passing around. Okay, so school spirit has spun around since the fall of last year, and Mr. Martin gave me an idea, and then we decided to go with it, so we're making it up as we go, but so far, everything's had a lot of success. Um, last year, we talked about some focuses of the position, so we're looking at facilitating different opportunities, and for our clubs, or groups, or sports, and we're helping to create strong school and community connections, uh, looking to increase school home connections, more interactions with parents that are in the building, helping to increase school spirit, as we said, and supporting extra, extra curriculars for day-to-day. So in the first grade, we had completed projects and events thus far. I presented to you last, you know, November, I think, so I picked up, um, like, spring of twenty twenty-four. So we were able to secure a new speaker system for events, um, I know the one we had before, Heather's speakers, fantastic, but not for outside stuff, so we now have a big one with the two speakers, we use it for things like, um, soccer fest, diamond chest, we've used it for pep rallies, it's working out really well. Um, we're under the spirit days, we did some sectional send-offs, I mean, have one of these tapes, those sectionals, we organize each other, probably, make time. Um, we did coaches versus cancer last year, school spirit did, uh, rhythm making tables, um, for, um, cancer awareness, and we also supported the, um, sophomore and freshman class, when they did their fundraising there. Uh, we did the JCS MCS Fund Day in this room of twenty twenty-four. It was in conjunction to a program that Allison did with PE, where we had the professional drug lawyers come in, we actually kept them in nervous students the rest of the day, and I'm not caring, and we did a bunch of stations, we provided at grade level, uh, they had a lot of fun with that, and we'd like to do something again like that this spring, if Allison has some idea, um, so she'd like to, we'll do that off of it. Um, a couple of other things, literacy night, the park kickoff event was really well received, it was the first time we've done it, we actually had a lot of families come through, we did a book giveaway, we signed up for park, we had Eric Gelber talking about resources from the library they could use, the town library came, for activities, we had snacks, we're doing that again, it's on the calendar for two hundred and twenty-seven this year, okay, the Thursday, um, till four March. Uh, I helped them back the park with kind day, we hosted a couple of five-hour driving courses, we've been extremely well received, it's very hard to find a person now, so we've been working with the town, we've offered two of them so far, and we're going to do a number one in the spring, so we're kind of sick to the spring and fall schedule with that, we do them right at the meal site, the reason we do them there, not in the school building, is our presenter, he's fantastic, but he is very old school, so the meal site has a TV ECR set up that we can use, because he has UHS, and we'll use this, so we do it together, and what we hosted there, for kids, we can eye line each other on ECR, and we'll, you know. Um, I serve the community cleanup committee for grades four through twelve, I helped Heather add, wrote up the four, five, six plants, so, like, the four graders planted all of the flowers, and it's not in the barrels, uh, fifth grade worked at the depot, sixth grade worked at the cemetery, and headstones, uh, with the cemetery, uh, we did bread friends' breakfast, we brought that back, a little bit different than spending, like, morning, I actually think it was probably a little better, we did about an hour, bread friends' came in, they ate, we had a slideshow, we did some practice activities, we're doing that again this year, that is in May, uh, yeah, I don't have the date in front of me, can I tell you the time? Something, something like that, in May. Um, we did a spring pep rally here in the gym, we were, this was a speaker system, it was, it was pretty great. Uh, we did a swim into, oh, sorry, skip me one, uh, it helps with field day, it was a little big theme, so, lots of decorations, we did speakers for that, uh, we did a swim into summer duck hunt, if you didn't hear about it, it was really popular, so we had teeny tiny little ducks, and they were around the building, if you found a duck, you turned within, and they went in, I know Caroline was bringing us up today, um, it was really popular, it wasn't, it wasn't something that required a ton of time or energy, but because we're really excited to participate, so, actually, we're looking at future events on the next page, my plan is to do a stop at the summer dinosaur museum, there's a variety of games, that's on, on my radar. Um, Diamond Fest, what I'm really proud of, uh, over the summer, we did school supply clothing giveaway, we helped, uh, over seventy families, we gave away free school supplies and clothing, uh, we were able to not only meet the needs during that time, but I also have a stockpile in my classroom, so we get new students that are rolling, and I get a phone call if they need things, we can give them everything from a backpack to a lunchbox to all of their pencils, scissors, pens, paper, uh, so they come in not stressing out about being those supplies, we're doing that again this year, I need to come up with dates for that, but actually, in August, that seems to work out pretty well, so we're planning on that. I feel like I'm just talking a lot, um, let's see, community health, we decorated, it's our second annual time, we actually brought in some warm windows, uh, clubs and organizations, classes decorating, it was around town, and we had a panel of judges go around, uh, pick some winners, we plan to continue that and maybe grow it more in the future, um, as clubs can volunteer, if they want to do them too, and we have more businesses wanting to participate, so we have classes able to do it, so we have a good time. Uh, for the first time, school spirit over from retreat, it's been a PTO thing for years, but the PTO is very low in numbers, uh, and the two ladies who were organizing it in the past, we're just heading out this year, so we picked that up, we expanded a little bit, some other activities, uh, we have beautiful weather for it, it was like sixty-something degrees, so we had to turn up for some retreats, uh, we did another pep rally, um, the JCS kindness closet project started this fall, um, I'm sure you've seen it around, but if you're not familiar with it, we now have, um, hygiene and personal supplies available for free to all students throughout the school building, that has been booked places, so instead of having one area, we had baskets made up of these items in high ladies, traffic school areas, and they, you know, they can grab shampoo, too fresh, take face, or dry wash, anything like that, um, that's been through a really generous community donation, so that's pretty stockpile, uh, that's been really well received. Uh, we did a secret spirit week, which we love, but we did a spirit week, we can tell the kids about it, so the teachers did really odd stuff all week, um, we worked with students one day, and we had to drink out of things that weren't water bottles one day, and having pajamas, so, my class, horrified, um, the kids loved it, and by like Wednesday, they were trying to figure out what we're gonna do the next day, uh, so that was a lot of fun, and we'd like to maybe do that at some point again next year. Uh, our holiday stuff that we always do, we did the holiday door contest, and then we did the community door tour again, uh, during the winter concert, so we all definitely doors, we were voted on, uh, and then the community was invited in to take the tour and perform pop singers, PHBM concert. One thing I'm loving about this position is people come to me with really crazy ideas, and then we make it happen, so, I mean, one this year was we sent an elf trap, and we worked really hard all week to capture an elf, um, in the trophy case, and our elf actually came today, she dressed up as an elf, and we caught her during the sing-along in a net, so that was hugely popular for this year, they spent all week trying to figure out who the elf was, and what was happening, and then when we came out, they had these, came in dresses, and elf in the trophy case, it was, it was pretty surprising, they were laughing at it. Um, I'm working with, uh, support groups to schedule and facilitate basketball concessions, we haven't been able to cover every game, but we've been doing so much better than we were last year, we covered, I think, three so far, and then we have four or five more on the schedule to have concessions for that. Um, I'm on the content committee, with this plan again, so we're working for this, okay, we're, okay, so, okay, sorry, I will talk quickly. Um, let's see, I have dates from events, and if I just wait it, um, family literacy night, to our park kickoff again, April twenty-seventh, we'll be inviting family, community members in again, um, for the eighth and sixth students, to kick off our park celebration, and, once again, I did this a few years ago before school spirit was a thing, but we're doing, um, food for the casting crew, uh, West Side Story, uh, dress rehearsal, we actually performed, like, it makes a lot easier for families, um, because they're here right up, so we just feed them up here, so that's something I coordinate with the musical families and the community members, so we can feed everybody in the chair, they don't have to worry about that. Uh, we are doing a spring five-hour course, and we're waiting to get back on, a couple of possible dates for that from our educator, um, that we're looking at probably in March or April. Uh, the stop at the summer dino hunt, it's famous, we're spreading it around, so it's tight, um, I'm really involved in helping with the community cleanup again, um, helping with the centennial celebration, part of that is something that fourth grade is doing, and we, and then I'm, I'm wearing multiple hats on this one, we're doing a JCS oral history project, uh, we are interviewing alumni from jobs that are in my classes, we're getting audio recordings, and during the centennial celebration, it's going to be posted, little QR codes to be scanned, and you can hear somebody talk about, uh, story or a kind ahead of JCS, so we've had a few people in already, Mr. Orgera is coming, and we need to come up with a date, uh, the kids are loving this, if anyone else is an alumni, wants to cover their topics, that would be awesome, uh, Mr. Rober came in, I thought he liked him, so we have probably twenty-five minutes of a story for him, that we have to cut down, but it's, but it's been a really fun project, and we're trying to get alumni from really as far back as we can to the recent past, so we can talk about the growth of this change in the building. So when we're done with that, um, it will be available during the centennial celebration, but then it's going to be posted, as I'm working with Mr. Gelber, on a JCS oral history project, the two pages, and the recordings are going to be shared with the historical society, who is going to open it up. Um, let's see, uh, continued involvement, field day, another pep rally, Diamond Fest, um, our school supply, clothing giveaway will happen again, I'll be putting out things at some point, for donations for that later. Ideas for the future. So Jill Hobson and I have an idea where over the summer, we'd like to maybe do some creative painting on the black, on the back pavement by, um, the playground, just things like, we have pop scotch, but there's quite a few really interesting things we can find online, but not a lot of money, where we can do a little obstacle courses and things, so more of that, it seems, maybe on the pavement, instead of on the grass, that would be volunteer-driven. Um, I would at some point, like, to bring back histories for parents that require funding, but it is one of my dreams out there, because it is a huge community event, it was one of the times that we saw a lot of parents in the building, and for positive reasons. Um, the person who's teaching, uh, teaching the five-hour courses has offered to do defensive driving courses here as well, so we're looking at setting up one of those in the near future, that would be paid, just like the five-hour course is paid by the attendee, um, but we provide space and organize the event, so I'm looking for that. Um, this one, someone came to me, and I am looking at it, um, GD classes, possibly for adult students, uh, the outreach center used to do that quite a bit, they don't have the resources to do that anymore, and I've had a couple of people ask, um, so I am looking at seeing what is involved in, possibly doing something like that, if anyone's here, uh, the closest ones are, like, small, just have to be online. Um, elementary community workshop afternoon, bringing in some outside facilitators, having them, um, teach a scale or share a hobby or something, we used to do that when I was in elementary school, it's a great way to get in, community members, teaching our kids, even if it's just for an hour or two, you sign up for something you're interested in, I remember we did, like, tin can sculptures or something, I had like forever, it was really popular. Um, I'd like to do a congratulations graduates, talk the walk, our seniors are out of here early, our elementary kids are still here, so we did, um, sidewalk talk at the cell, or not the cell, it was the van from the sidewalks, just with the graduation messages for them, uh, before graduation, like, um, seniors and senior outreach programs, it's really helpful, and managed, are mentioned in the community, um, seniors as in high school seniors, and seniors citizens, they're trying to really build, uh, more. Seniors as in high school seniors and senior citizens are trying to really build more senior citizens in the community here. When I was in school, we used to go to the nursing home once a month as honor society students. The nursing home is a little difficult. Now, because of health things and COVID, the senior center is trying to get some sort of communication. So this is just backburning possibly next year, maybe once a month during meal site time at the senior center, taking over some high school students, teach them how to use the outdoor home. Or, you know, something that the kids can give back to the older members of our community. So that's, that's an idea out there. I would love to host a public CPR first aid class. We've done it before here, but it's been a number of years. There are a lot of people who need certification or re-certification. We have the resources and capacity, so if we can find a facilitator. Once again, like the driving courses, that would be you pay for your certification. We host it here, so it's local. And then my last one, I have all these school supplies. I'm getting more school supplies. Don't actually have anything to keep them. So I'm looking for a spot in the building where I can maybe put shelving, so they're accessible all the time to staff. Right now, I have them, but people call me, and then we take them out, and they get with everybody. So I'm looking for a little space to do that. And I talked really quickly, and there was a lot of information. Do you have any questions? I'm home.
Did you actually have a chance to teach it at, or?
Sure.
You've got some great ideas and some of the stuff you've done. Last year, the windows, we talked about so much.
I was so sad, I couldn't think of having to do it. Next year, we're talking. This year was a short time.
Every year different, you know?
Yeah, everything is different through the years. Sometimes it's more interesting.
Yeah, yeah. But you just, I can't believe all the stuff you've done. And I might be able to help you to get, if you can't get a professor driving instructor, I might be able to help you.
I thought you might know somebody, so actually, I have some friends now.
Yeah. And I also can probably fix up a CPR.
That would be great. Perfect. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Can I just say, if you have a question, if you should comment, I can help to be helpful.
I want, I want to also say that she has done an incredible job. Certainly had the right person, David, who said yes to it. But I also want to point out again, this is another initiative of the board. And I'm sure it has led to a lot of positive outcomes. Thank you, guys.
Okay, let's move on to the items for discussion and our action. Motion to appoint Sarah Pearson as a teaching assistant, Level One, per the CSE contract effective January 6, 2025. Which is by Tara, voted by Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Same carries. Motion to appoint Tasha Hall as a teaching assistant, Level One, per the CSE contract effective January 6, 2025. Motion by Tara. voted by Irwin. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Same carries. Motion to approve Heather Flanagan, letter of intent to retire, effective June 30, 2025. Motion by Chris. Second by Tara. Tom, do you want to add your gratitude with most gratitude?
Again, when we picked you up, there was no, there was nobody else. We, we just worked with you. And for all the years you did elementary and everything, that sounds awesome. You did a great job there, but you became an outstanding principal. And the stuff you got accomplished, like the pavilion, the other work. And you constantly evolve and start, like, you work well with Mike, you super and that. And you still have, no need, or whatever, with all those teachers. And I think as a board, we really appreciate what you've done, and it'll be really best.
Thank you for the opportunity and your support.
I have to speak a little bit too. You know, Heather came on nine years ago, almost. And we have worked together, and I have got to say that it's probably one of the best working relationships that I've had. I appreciate it as a teacher, but I am more so appreciative of her as an administrator with me. We had a conversation just the other day. We don't always agree, but I think that made us a stronger team, because we were both able to kind of point out things that we might have been missing. So I definitely add on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Same carries. Motion to approve Ronald Wilcock, letter of intent to retire, effective March 1st, 2025. Motion by Tara. Second by Irwin. Any discussion? Any discussion, please?
You are looking for a quick failure.
He's been with us for a while.
Rob has been with us for probably 25 years, part-time for a lot of that. I want to say the last year, four days was full-time. Rob has done a really nice job. For the longest time, he was the owner of the painter. He did everything. And so, yeah, he would go in there. It's a loud and therapeutic time.
And Rob, and I've known him before he even came to school, and I know his kids. But you're right about the painting, about coming to school, there'd be a painting, which I understand. And when he was doing the cleaning and on the floor and stuff, he didn't stop the coffee, but he just kept going. You had to stop him if you wanted to say hi. And you may be got a hi on, you kept going. And I remember painting the walls, and there wouldn't be a drop of paint. On the floor, there wouldn't be a drop of paint. Out of the lines, he was just, just a very good worker and kept to himself and kept busy. He's going to be a great boss.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Same carries. Motion to approve sports merger with Nevada Central School, 2025, June 26 school year. Motion by Tara.
Seven.
Second by Tom. Any discussion?
I do want to mention that we did meet at the subcommittee. And probably most important thing that came out of that meeting, I don't, certainly people recommend and jump in. But was the discussion and the notion of the 50/50 with practices and games. And there is talk about looking at the possibility of other, for some sports, modified at Nevada University here. But I think probably the wording that I thought was more important was that it was going to be allowed with administration and the athletic director to really come up with a plan as we move forward, as things come up and things make sense. I think that was the one thing that I took out of the meeting that I felt more comfortable. I think it's going to be harder for industry and sports direction, for sports athletic directors. But it probably makes more sense.
Yeah, the committee really agreed that having flexibility to, you know, practices and games was very important and not be so rigid, particularly if you're out of that. You know, specifically soccer season, given that we have to be here in the fields here. It means that it makes more sense to have all these parties that is there. Whenever they say that they want to work it out, or putting maybe the real money into including their facility over there, is a positive thing. But I think just having that flexibility and knowing that we're going to put our efforts in the best condition possible.
Both, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Same carries.
Can I just say that another discussion has kind of stucked here, but you know, with the contract. As you guys know, or if you remember back a while ago, we had talked about that North Warren. We'll use it sincerely, but we are continuously looking at other sports that we may join with North Warren. Right now, as you know, we are in a country that's cross-country running, Nordic, and tennis. This year would be the first year that we're doing tennis. They have also asked us to consider for next year, girls soccer. So it's on the table. I can get more information as we're going. One of the things that girls soccer would be the, the first time we've had to have a discussion about is what league are we going to play in? Because the tennis, Nordic, and cross-country, it's been the Adirondack and American. So now we are playing in two different leagues. They play in the Adirondack, we play in the NBA C. So that discussion is happening. And probably at the next 14 meetings, we need to have a new permission that's going to be there.
When did we need to make this even possible?
That one was March.
March?
Do you remember that? I think that it's March. I think it's if I may use that. But it also has some place on our golf. Yeah, but that's a different, I want to make sure we understand, that's different. Because on the golf team, you mean they are going to be cooped. That's not a merged team that we're taking, like playing together as a merged team. That's our student, as we've done that with field hockey and bowling, we've got that. That we have students that will participate in that. So it's a little bit different. I hear what you're saying, it's a little bit different.
So we would be a three team?
Two. It's still two.
Okay. Would you like to know if, can we have students come play with us as John doesn't know that, I was jealous?
That is a possibility. They're not looking. Well, it's really what are they looking for and what are we looking for? And when the day is over, even sites can say, okay, we're just trying to stay at home. Last year, I think the numbers for the modified, Heather, I'm going to have you remember. I think we were both at 13, and we made it through the season. But both of our varsity's, I think, struggled with numbers, especially once they got into the season and had injuries. I think North Warren, I'm trying to think of this other city that can remember better than ours. But I believe North Warren had at the end, six varsity girls that they were playing for.
They were playing.
So.
So I'm trying to think of some things if you could bring to us next meeting, if that's the area of giving us numbers. What else would the information be, what would it look like?
Well, we, we talked briefly about that, and everything from like, what would practices look like? What would participation look like? I will be honest, we didn't get into a lot of participation because I want to make sure this might be a girl before. If you go down that road, there's nothing you can do. But practices could look like, as an example that we do in cross-country and tennis. I'm not saying this is ideal, but some of the practices could be done individually, and then you bring a team together, and you do larger practices. And with that such initial conversation, that I don't want to say there's been concrete definition on that.
Yeah, I, I really want to know what the structure of that, because having to, it's hard enough to go between the two close by schools. You'd have to add another 15 minute drive to go to another whole location for practice. That's in its own business. And I mean, not at the sacrifice of having a team, but I want to do what I want to do to have teams. Yeah, I. My initial reaction to that was.
Yeah, I was there too. And transportation being the.
That's mainly.
I want y'all to know that when I talk about numbers, when I talk about the modified and said that we had 13. If you think about soccer, 13 you can play, but you're playing teams of 16, 17. And that 17 really does make a difference as you're playing that game. So there's often times when you say, well, could you get enough for two? The answer is yes. Sometimes the question is, could you get enough for a competitive team? And, you know, that's where you get to those questions of like, yeah. And also, when you get larger numbers, you know, I want to play front line, but so do four people. We're all going to maybe try a little bit harder to play that front line, you know, to save that. So there is something we said about numbers when we have just announced this.
Are our AGs in this conversation, please?
Yes. Yes.
Are there any more questions that we'd like to come up with for the next meeting?
The only one that I can think of is, most importantly, the group's way, I think, can be questioned.
Yeah. Can I just get a feel for this board? Do you have a preference where you want to stay in the NBA C? I mean, that certainly is where we're playing all the other teams sport, where we're playing.
I'd be curious to hear the opinion of the AGs. What do they think?
Well.
What, what do our AGs think of playing a different way? Is, how does it benefit us?
Because, my, my opinion is, I'm sorry.
Well, if I had to decide tonight, I would want to stay in the NBA C.
I will say it will help with transportation, because the way more you have the two teams, you know, traveling together often times. And so for some sports.
I, I think if we move over to Southern, we, with still with the numbers, we're going to have a few more. We don't want to be competitive in the tournament. I think we should stay in NBA C and see how it goes, you know? It goes great this year, we feel we're good enough. We can always go next year. I think I'll stay in NBA C, just to see what we can help.
And again, that's just our, without any other schools that are in this conversation.
The Adirondack will be good, and they have a lot of points.
You'll be surprised how they're doing though, and how they're all merging.
Yeah. Yeah. All that place you're talking about.
I think it would be good to hear from, or at least.
Have those conversations.
Having those conversations with them to see what they, and they're the ones right in the middle of this. And so, having a good time.
Just want to make you guys aware.
Okay, so we are on the session for the January 16 proposition vote.
I just wanted to put this on the agenda, because it felt like we're in open session that, you know, the 16, couple of days from now, we're going to be having a voting vote. The vote is from noon to 12, out in front of the gym.
12. Maybe to your room.
Correctly, it's 12.
12. Monday, Monday. And then we have a meeting afterwards.
Correct. Yes.
And it'll be in the half of two, not in here. Because we have the live stream to vote, yeah, process.
And there's a conference that night at 6:00. And what's next? What's next? Anything else you want to add to that?
No, I need to go.
We are looking at reports, we have always, finding new interests met.
I think we're looking at the fundamentals, we started the budget conversation. There's a realization that healthy transition to the lightness, and we're looking for information in the February for one. Hopefully, the next day. And then more.
Not with the only three reports, yeah. Updates. About the holidays, so. Any other news?
I've noticed a lot like right past the school early in the morning when I'm on my way.
I've noticed a lot when I drive past the school early in the morning when I'm on my way out, but that side hill is pretty much filled with cars before 8 o'clock. I've had a lot of concerns coming from pre-k parents and bus drivers regarding the pre-k parents trying to place a park to drop the kid off. I don't understand why the staff that park on that side hill, because it seems like there's more and more cars there than every year. There's more than enough room in the lower parking lot and the upper parking lot for them to park, to leave that side hill open for the pre-k parents to drop off and pick up their kids. And I think it would be a lot easier, not only for that, but you're also the fire that has to come through, or the buses when they come through, and I just think that it needs to be looked at. I think the board needs to say something, because that way it would take it off my pressure. Because that is teachers that are.
It's really not my pressure, because I agree with parking. It's been parking there forever, it used to be parking there when it was a two-way road. And, you know, I don't personally see it as you do.
No, but forever ago, there wasn't a pre-k program, and now there's a pre-k program, and you've got parents that are in it, and they have to park, and now in order for them to park, they have to park in the no parking fire lane. Because there's like eight. But they, I just don't see a reason there's more than enough parking for the staff, that the staff should be able to park in the lower parking lot.
I, I had this special, like before, I felt the same way as Tara before, but then Mike explained it to me. We were all cool, but I agree with what Tara's saying. Is there a rule or a plan, you know, like how we check?
Well, the regular parking is not parking, they park before the parking, it's the draw. Just like when the buses drop off. It's short, it's free, and you're within the size of, you know.
Yeah, it's just now, it used to be there was only like sort of three cars, and now there's like seven. What's the difference, you walk up the hill one way, or you park in the parking lot, where there's three slots, and leave it open for people that are coming up to school. That's the way.
Okay, we can have a longer discussion on this. Maybe we might sit down and have a conversation about it, since you come up with.
We can, I just, at some point, the board may have to step in and make a decision.
Okay, see if you, if I can work it out. And the other business. And visit comments. Okay, and whether there are comments. Upcoming dates, January 16th is our public vote, 8:00. Our elementary concert, 6:00, sophomore bake sale, 6:00, 7:30. And our Board of Education unit, 8:15. January 18th is the archery tournament. January 21st is our regents, English regents. January 31st is the Russian dance. January 10th is our next board education meeting. So we are going to motion to adjourn to an executive session for personnel hiring issues.
Motion.
Motion by Tom. Come on, Tara, all in favor? All right.